Cunningham Town Board, please come to order. Clerk, please call and roll.
President.
Here.
Here.
President. And we have approval of the amendments at the previous meeting?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and approved. Did the amendments from the previous meeting be approved? Any concerns? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes. Committee to verify bills. Fund, we've got thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty cents. General Assistant Fund is thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents, is that right?
Correct.
We'll get approval of the bills.
Move approval of both?
Second.
Moved. The second is that bills be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, passes. Reports of officers? None?
None.
Any petitions in communications? Seeing none? Move on to old business? Seeing none? New business? Resolution authorizing intervention and appeal to property tax appeal board. Neiman Foods County Market. You want to address that issue?
They didn't have an appraisal. They've gone to the property tax appeal board, and they haven't appraisal done. And we had talked to Mr. Neiman, and we had agreed that we thought the assessment was too high. And we thought we had an agreement with him, but then his tax agent decided that they only would settle on a value that was less than their own appraisal. So we didn't think that that was a good idea. So, we're going to proceed. We hope to work this out beforehand. But we still have to intervene in order to protect ourselves.
Question. It was about two-hundred thousand dollars you dropped, right? When you came back the second time, it was about two-hundred thousand dollars less than what it was the first time, the appraisal?
Yes, that they wanted to be-
And they still didn't want to go along with the program?
They wanted it to be lower than their own appraisal.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Take it or motion?
I move we approve resolution number T-2003-08-004-R.
Second.
We're moving the second resolution. T-2003-08-S-004-R be approved. Any concerns? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none? Resolution passes. Number two, an amended agreement concerning the disposition and use of funds dispersed through the town of Cunningham, City of Urbana Consolidated Social Service Program fiscal year 2003-2004, Homestead Apartments. Any comments?
The original grant was for an AmeriCorps worker, and they do not have one this time around, so the funds are being used for administrative purposes.
Right.
So we just need to approve the amended agreement?
Correct. Because we have to do a new contract.
I have a question. Do you have any concerns? If the AmeriCorps program was not canceled, then Homestead Apartments would have got along fine with the administrative cost that they had, right?
As far as we know. I don't know if they didn't receive any funding from anybody else, or... But it's going for administrative and operational support.
Now, the question I'm asking is, was the administration and operational support going to be taken care of if AmeriCorps didn't fall through?
I would assume.
But because the four-hundred, forty-three-hundred dollars is available, they want to switch, switch the budget, right?
Now, actually, I think it works the other way around. I think they have to make up the work that the AmeriCorps volunteer would do, and that's actually going to cost them more because AmeriCorps, I don't know what they have-
They just get like a grant after they complete their year there, they just received like a lump sum of maybe two thousand dollars.
And that's from AmeriCorps, but do you know what the agency, when an agency has AmeriCorps volunteers, what, how much money the agency has to put into having? I don't think they get them free, but they, but they pay. Homestead would have to pay something to have an AmeriCorps volunteer, but I guess my point is whatever they had to pay for an AmeriCorps person was, would have been less money than what they're going to have to pay now to do the AmeriCorps person's job.
Correct.
And I think that's why they want it for administration, because it will, this probably, this is going to cost them more now, and we, and our grant isn't going to pick up that whole cost. I think that's my understanding. I think, Ms. Wyman, did you know something about this?
Just that, from a couple of years ago, I remember hearing that an Ameri, to have an AmeriCorps volunteer, or AmeriCorps staff person, it was about five thousand dollars or so that the agency had to put up. And, and then I guess that the AmeriCorps chart program paid for the rest of, of the costs for the staff person for a year. So if the change is only, what about, it's about four thousand dollars, I think, or four, between four and five, then that's, my guess is that's about what the agency was going to have to pay for their AmeriCorps chart person. But I think as Ms. Pat suggested, the, the amount of staff work, you know, was for a full-time person, basically, so it's going to be more than, certainly costs more than five thousand dollars for the agency.
Right.
General, do you have anything to say?
No.
Since most of us seem to be in agreement that it's going to cost Homestead more now than it did before, a motion would be in order?
I move that we amend the agreement concerning the disposition and use of funds dispersed through the town of Cunningham, City of Urbana Consolidated Social Service Program fiscal year 2003-2004.
Second.
Moving the seconded. That the agreement be amended concerning the disposition and use of funds dispersed through the town of Cunningham, City of Urbana Consolidated Service Fund. Will a clerk please call and roll?
Mr. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
Yes. Any other comments before this meeting is adjourned? This meeting now stands adjourned.
I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will a clerk please call and roll?
Other persons? Chenoweth? Present. Hayes?
Present.
Huth? Otto?
Present.
Pat? Present. Wayland? Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterwhite?
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is approval of the amendments at the previous meeting.
So moved.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any additions or corrections? We don't have a- Any discussion? One, two, three, four, five, six. I had a quorum with the mayor on something. Here's one where the mayor didn't vote. Heard from either-
Yes, Ms. Huth is out of town. I forget where she's, she's working. She called me from out of town and said she wouldn't be able to make it back in time for the meeting.
I saw Mr. Wayland this weekend, so-
He called earlier and said that he was called out of town.
There are going to be a couple of items. Well, we have, we have, just put it on the minutes, I guess not.
No, we have-
Any discussion on the minutes? No discussion? All those in favor of approval of the amendments at the previous meeting, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We're now at additions to the agenda. If we're not expecting Mr. Wayland or Ms. Huth, there are a couple of items that we can't vote on tonight, coming from the committee of the whole. Items C and D require six votes of council members, so we don't have enough. So if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and put that on a meeting for two weeks.
I was just wondering if it needs to be, do I think these need to be done sooner than that? Because we could have a special meeting before the committee meeting next week, if that's the case.
I'm Ezra April. I don't think that two weeks would make that much of a difference. I think that, that in, after two weeks, we have a development agreement requirement in D. And C, we're probably okay. If I find out otherwise, I will notify you and we can call a special meeting.
If we need six votes, I'll just alert you, I may be gone two weeks from now. Hope I'll be able to be here, but depending on schedule works out, I may not be able to be here. If you have six votes, otherwise, that's not a big deal, otherwise, we should probably try to squeeze it in.
But you will be here next week?
I will, yes.
Special meeting.
Go ahead.
Let's have a special meeting.
Okay. We'll go ahead and put that on a special meeting at seven-thirty, a week from today. So items C and D of the committee of the whole report are on the agenda. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll go to petitions and communications. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll fill out one of these cards and bring it up to myself or the clerk, you'll get a chance to do so. First, we have Joe Duchene on the proposed hotel tax increase. Joe, you know, council members, you've gotten a letter from the Urbana hotel owners and managers on your desk this evening, and Mr. Duchene is here to elaborate on that.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Duchene, the general manager at Eastland Suites in Urbana. I'm here representing the, the local hotels that have signed the letter that's in front of you. This letter was written in opposition for a tax or an increase in our hotel occupancy tax that is in the proposal or discussion process within the local community. This tax, it was, is allowed for by the signing of a bill by Governor Bogayevich authorizing the downstate sports facility authority. And that authority has taxing powers to implement a hotel occupancy tax up to two percent. And that tax, for the authority to do that, however, needs council approval from each municipality that's going to be supporting it. The, there's quite a few issues involved with the sports facility authority, more so than I can go over here in five minutes. That's why I wrote you the letter, so that you could have a chance to look at the issues that we've been looking at. We've, we've known about this for about the last month and a half to two months, had a lot of discussion among our hotel partners, and have come to the conclusion that it is not something that we really want to see and happen in this community at this time. Also, the issue of the, overriding issue, however, is still the increase in the local hotel tax. And so, we're very concerned about the damage that that could do on our, on our ability to compete regionally with other cities with lower occupancy taxes. We're also very concerned about the image that it'll give to our customers as they come in and check into our desks and, and face a thirteen percent occupancy tax. That tax would be the largest tax, occupancy tax outside the city of Chicago. And so I think you can, you look at our community here and look at the city of Chicago, there might have been reasons in Chicago to do it, to keep the Bears or to keep the White Sox, but to do something like this to develop a regional or a local hockey team, I think, is taking a step, pretty broad step in regard to that, that ability. So if you have any questions now, that's fine. Jeff Edwards is also here with me. He's the manager of the Holiday Inn in Urbana. He's also a signer on the letter. We're available now or at any time to answer any of your questions involved with this facility and, and the taxing issues that'll be, I'm sure it'll be coming before you folks within, oh, the next four to six weeks. If you haven't already been lobbied by their, their attorney or the Mervis Group or their Mervis Group's attorney, I'm sure you will be. We do not have a PowerPoint presentation to show you. All we have is our, our instincts and our ability to operate hotels standing in our, you know, with us, and so we feel that we have experience in this, and hopefully that's enough to persuade you folks to back us in regard to opposing an increase in tax.
Are there any questions, Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes, thanks for bringing this to our attention. I, I just want to understand one of the points in the letter. What you say is that the, that the downstate sports facility authority has been exempted from property tax, so they would be developing facilities that were tax exempt. And it sounds like the, the same property that's designated for an ice rink or some kind of sports facility could also contain hotels or restaurants, which would also be tax exempt. Is that correct?
You know, I, I'll tell you, I'm not an attorney, and I've, I've read the laws, and, and I can only guess that, that they, anything on the sports facility site would be tax exempt, whatever use that would be put to, as long as the conforming use was in the law. But the, and so, I'm, I'm real skeptic. I can, could foresee a hotel being built there that would be property tax exempt, a restaurant being built there that property tax exempt. However, it really is determined by who makes up the authority and what, what, how broad the authority interprets it. And that's one of the issues that we have a real problem over at this point, is the governor's established the law that allows for the authority. He hasn't established the board as of yet, and so we don't know what the, what the, you know, the feelings of that board would be. However, we do know that that board will still want to pass a hotel tax of two percent, and that we're still opposed to.
I just have a quick follow-up question. It sounds from the letter also that you, you attempted to contact Bogayevich's office and were unable to receive-
No, we have done nothing in regard to the, with the governor, as far as him, to dissuade him from signing the bill. The bill was, I think it was presented by Senator Winkle, and, but I'm not sure how it actually went through the process. All we know is that it was supported. If you looked at last Sunday's paper, you will notice that the Mervis Group and the Fox Atkins Group were pretty big donors this last couple of months to Governor Bogayevich's campaign fund, so you can get an indication that there's probably pretty good interest from them to get that passed or signed.
So I, I guess I asked the question because a lot of the questions you raise, I also, I read, I read the paper and I read your letter, and the questions you raise are ones that I share, and I wonder how you're pursuing answers to those questions.
Well, we've, we've asked most of these questions to the group, but we've not really gotten any substantial answers to them. Our basic answers that we've gotten are, well, what can we do to make this work? Well, our general feeling is really nothing, because it's the issue of the tax that overrides everything, and that's something that, that just won't go away from our point of view. So we're not going to, you know, we're not in a position to bargain that away. The issue of the tax is paramount.
When you say you've asked the group, what group are you referring to?
The Mervis Group and their attorney.
Okay. That's all, thanks.
All right, thank you. If you would note, my, I don't have my email address on there. It's jduchene@advancenet.net. If you'd like to note that, and if you have any questions, you can email me, and I can, you know, sometimes that's easier than trying to catch people on the phone anymore, so.
Joe, I did have a question. One of the points that you made was that, based on the numbers that the group is using, the development group is using for the convention center and the sheets of ice and so forth, is that a certain number of room nights would be generated, hotel room nights would be generated. But your belief is that, and for you and the rest of the hotel managers and owners in Urbana, that it would have, the radius of the effect of the, the convention center would be relatively small, within, say, a half a mile of the convention center. You think that there would be enough rooms to, to supply the demand for that convention center? And so that, that economic development effect would not reach to Urbana or to, quite frankly, to many of the hotels in Champaign? Is that?
Well, yes, an interesting dynamic that goes on there is that they're looking at developing a hotel that'll, in that, in that process, that'll generate thirty-six thousand room nights a year, thirty-six thousand, five hundred for what they're planning. Their project is only looking like thirty-five thousand is what they're talking in regard to economic impact. But within a quarter mile of that site, I estimated that there's around one-hundred-and-twenty thousand vacant room nights a year sitting empty, given local vacancy rates. And so, something, you know, an event occurs over there, people typically stay closest to the event that they possibly can. Overflow would go from the new hotel to those hotels that are over in that area, and until they filled up, it would not, it wouldn't show up in Urbana. The other issue is if something occurs on a busy weekend, where we're, our hotels are busy, and we cannot take any overflow that would come from that, those rooms would go to Rantoul. You know, and so, during busy times, you won't see them either, because typically, busy is real busy around here, and, and regular is pretty slow, so.
See what you mean.
Kind of a double, double thing that goes on there. And so, the overflow to Urbana is pretty far down the line, as far as most of the events that'll occur there. Because most of the events are, are sports events of, you know, hockey games, that sort of thing, which you get two teams of fifteen people each and a small fan base that would come in from out of town, you're really not going to see a lot of economic impact from that. As, and indicated in there, that fifty-three percent of their economic impact that they, they call for in their economic impact study, which you probably haven't seen yet, is derived from twenty-eight days of events that are related to meetings and conferences. And so, I mean, it's, so the sports side of that-
That's twenty-eight days a year?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, twelve percent of the, of the use of the facility will generate fifty-three percent of the economic impact, but our real concerns are, will that facility get its full twelve percent? Or, you know, if we're going to throw, that, as much money as they're asking at it, really we ought to be developing a convention center if we're going to develop anything and worry about ICE through some other taxing method. But, as I said, still the overriding interest is no tax. I mean, that's, that's the real issue with us, so.
Ms. Wyman?
You compared the taxes to Chicago, and I'm wondering also, what is the Rantoul tax for a hotel?
You know, I've, I'm not sure what Rantoul is. Probably ten percent, it could be eleven percent. Most, most municipalities now, whether they're home rule or not, are in the, anywhere from the eight to twelve percent range in central Illinois. Blowing to Normal's twelve percent, I think Springfield's ten percent. I can get you that information. Illinois Lodging Association also, they have a document that's published, I could get to you, that, that shows the occupancy rates and that sort of thing. The real concern about it, you know, is, is the Illinois Lodging Association says that, you know, a two percent change in your occupancy tax can have a negative impact up to five percent occupancy, hotel occupancy rate. So what's the point in increasing our occupancy tax by two percent to turn away five percent more people?
Sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Like I said, any questions, don't hesitate to contact me.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Jeff, did you want to say, add anything, or?
I was thinking over five minutes.
Yeah, oh, that's all right. Next is Reddith Ewing, 2102 Melrose, on the topic of the taxi ordinance.
I'm not a really good speaker, so bear with me here. For some time, I've been going to various people in the city, asking if I couldn't do something about people who were scanning my radio transmissions. I've asked someone to crack down on people who, who drive taxis without the proper taxi licenses, without the proper insurance, et cetera. The current taxi ordinance makes it entirely too easy for Joe Blow to go out on the street and call himself a taxi driver. You don't have to have anything except a car and enough money to pay your first two months' insurance. The second thing is that we need to add some sort of enforcer. The city needs to have somebody who is designated to make sure that the rules that you have in the taxi ordinance are followed. What has happened is that we have eight or ten small operators, most of them with one cab, who congregate down in front of the Illinois terminal, and they fight each other. They, it's really disgraceful. And I'm sure that the next thing that's going to happen is that taxis are not going to be allowed at the terminal. Yellow Cab has calls. We don't have to sit down and wait for people to come out of the door to get a passenger. We transmit our calls via radio. The people who are sitting down at the bus station and the train station also have scanners, and they listen to our calls. If there is one close, they run over and try to pick it up. That's stealing. Now, I talked to Mayor Satterwhite once, and he said, well, he thought it was enterprising that they were able to use technology to their advantage. He probably doesn't remember that, but, all I'm saying is that there is a mess. I am the largest taxi owner. I have twenty cars. They don't run all the time, but I would just not like to be embarrassed by the other people in the taxi business. Go ahead.
Hyman?
So it sounds like the, the main issue is other taxi companies stealing, basically stealing your business by, by hearing about where, where the pickups are supposed to happen.
Right.
And there isn't any security over the radio lines, or, I mean, I don't know that technology well enough.
Well, for, I think it was five hundred dollars a radio, the radio cost two. I, I installed what's called a scrambling dealing in about twelve radios. And then when we tried to use it, the drivers, my drivers refused to use the scrambler, because it, it made a noise every time you turned, you know, every time you keyed up the microphone, there was a noise. And anyway, they refused to use it. So it was not cost effective.
I see.
It did work, however.
Thank you.
Other questions? To clarify your recollection of my comment, I recall my comment was that it was enterprising for them to use cell phones for their businesses, but I did not, I don't recall that you mentioning that they were stealing your radio calls, but certainly if they're doing something unethical, that's enterprising in a way that we don't want to encourage. But, so you may have had a erroneous recollection of my comments.
Possibly.
Thank you.
I would like to urge you to please study this question. I'd like to, I'd like to have something more pithy in the ordinance.
Hyman?
Yeah, I'm just want to, I'm wondering if, I know our legal staff is probably working on a lot of different issues right now, but if that's something to look over, see if, you know, there are even other, other communities who have, have something, some teeth in, in their ordinances about stealing other customers- about stealing other customers or something like that, to look over that. And I don't know if the mayor, if you convene the, everyone who's got taxi licenses once a year or anything like that to, because I know there have been other issues that taxi businesses have brought up, and I think you deal with them on a, as they come up rather than waiting, waiting for any sort of annual meeting, but I'm wondering if you could get the, if legal staff could take a look at, maybe weaken it a little stronger, seeing if there's a way to do that.
Got it.
I just want to make one more point, and that is that there are people who do not follow the state rules. They run around with vans that are not licensed and are not insured. There was an accident not too long ago, within the last three months, somewhere between here and Chicago, some fellow had 18 people in his van and no insurance, and he'd done it before. There needs to be somebody who can check this kind of thing. Our people, the people who come into this community and who ride in taxis need to know that they are insured in that taxi. There's no reason to have an ordinance if you can't at least provide the community with some sort of protection.
There's two issues. One is, I, the way radio technology works, it's unclear to me how our police would enforce people decoding radio signals and then, because there's no record of them having received those signals. So unlike data that transmits, and there's sometimes a record, a log of how data is transmitted, with radio signals, it's actually, and this is the reason why the federal government is chasing down pirate radio stations and is alluded by them all of the time, because they can't actually figure out who's transmitting, from where they're transmitting, and they also don't have any documentation of receipt. That's the nature of radio. So I'm not sure, I think probably the best way in which that could be enforced is for cab companies that have that happening, your cab company included, to try to find a pattern of who it may be.
We always know who it is.
And then the question would be whether or not, I'm not sure if the law says that you cannot, actually, Radio Shack sells the radio de scramblers down the street here. So I know that it's legal to actually own them, and it, I don't think it's, and then there's specific purposes by which it can be used, but it's very difficult to enforce that because there's just not a data trail. So I just wanted to bring that up, that it's not, it's something where a cab company doing that would have to be caught in the process of receiving a radio signal that was unauthorized for them. Then the second issue you brought up of the, just the issue of whether or not there, we have it, we have an ordinance on the books, and with every law that we have in Urbana, it's really both up to our police enforcement and their limited in number, as well as to citizens, business owners and residents, to raise the issue, to actually give us some information about who may be, you know, operating ghost taxis, so to speak, or in New York, we used to call them gypsy taxis, who are not regulated. So I think that whenever you find, whenever you find evidence, or any cab driver finds evidence that there's a gypsy taxi operating, I think, you know, our police department needs to get a phone call because otherwise it's very difficult for us to enforce that kind of thing. But it certainly is a serious issue when there are people who think that they're walking into a cab that is authorized and licensed and they're safe to do so, and they're not. And we certainly have a number of visitors and students in our community, and so it's definitely of concern, but I really think that we need the cab industry to help us enforce that and to really contact, be in close contact with our police department. Not really sure if, looking at our ordinance, if the whole is in the ordinance or is in the enforcement, it sounds like it's in the enforcement.
Well, our drivers, when they see somebody who doesn't have a proper license plate on, we can't tell if they're properly insured, but you can tell if you have just a regular license plate on a vehicle. Then we do call the police, and so far, to no avail. There is a company called Illini Limo, which is said to run around without any sort of license plate, proper license plate, either an LY or a TX or a PT. Those are the three public transportation licenses that I'm aware of. And they're still doing it. So maybe there's something, I don't know, how to do.
You know, the, supposedly Illinois has a mandatory car insurance law, supposedly. Back in New York, they have a mandatory insurance law. What happens is the state and insurance companies work together, and when that insurance gets ready to expire, the insurance company tells the state. And then the state tells those individuals that if they do not renew their insurance, then they want the plates. So until such time as the state and the insurance companies, you know, work that thing out, then it's going to be a lot of people driving around with little or no insurance, even though they say $500 fine. If the state, if we work with insurance companies to take those license plates away, then we find that we really would have a mandatory insurance policy.
I spend $50,000 a year or more uninsured.
Yeah, that's you. But I mean, the law says everybody's supposed to have it, but they don't.
Well, that's my point. You watch somebody get a lot to run around, taking my parents with no...
Any other petitions and communications this evening? Counsel members? It will...
Mayor Satterfield?
Yes.
I received a couple of contacts from people in my neighborhood who expressed concern about the meeting time for the Development Review Board. Actually, it was, they were also posted to the neighborhood list, you may have seen them. And they raised a valid point that having a meeting at 1:30 in the afternoon does not facilitate public involvement. I responded, I felt, when we changed the regulations for the Development Review Board, that that would be one of the things that would change, but I did say I'd bring it up tonight, and I do hope that's on the list of things to look at for the Development Review Board, about making sure meetings are outside of the traditional workday so that members of the public can attend.
Any other petitions and communications? Seeing none, we'll go to old business. We have one item under old business, and that's appointment to the Community Development Commission that was deferred to this meeting. And it's Carl Perry, who is an assistant wrestling coach at the U of I. He's been a member of the community for eight years, resident of Urbana since November of last year, and received his bachelor's degree from the University in Leisure Studies. And if approved by the council, his term will run till June 30th, 2006. I believe there's been a motion and a second. Is there, from the last meeting, is there any discussion? Discussion, will the clerk please call the roll? If all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Next, we have reports of standing committees. We have a report from the Committee of the Whole. Strato, I believe you're on for giving the report. I don't know if I've got with the absent council members this evening.
We've taken C and D off the agenda, but the other two items are still on, right?
Right.
Okay. Ordinance number 2003-07-074, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for consultant landfill mitigation. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on a budget ordinance for landfill mitigation. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Mayor Satterworth?
Yes. Motion carries with six ayes. Mr. Otto?
Ordinance number 2003-07-075, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a road right-of-way dedication, 706 South Glover. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Mr. Otto?
That concludes the report of the Committee of the Whole. The Committee of the Whole will next meet on Monday, August 11th, at 7:30 PM here in the Urbana City Council chambers.
All right, thank you. New business, we have a couple of items here, and Mr. Walden's passing around. Something with, this first item is an ordinance approving an amendment concerning vacations, vacation rights of way dated October 1, 2001, for the North Campus of the University of Illinois. Mr. Walden?
We made a late adjustment on the language as it relates to defining what the CPI is. We didn't make that change until today, this morning, and Jack and April and Bill actually worked that out this morning. I was kind of out of the loop, but they did a great job, and so this is a small change from what's in your packet, and the change is really on page two of the document at the bottom. So with that, just a little bit of background, if you'll recall, this relates to agreement, an agreement that we reached with the university in October 2001 that provides for vacation of significant properties or streets that are west of Harvey Street in Urbana in the University of Illinois District. The agreement operated as we expected that it would until recently. In 2001, the university acquired the properties that we expected them to acquire, and we vacated the right-of-ways that we expected to vacate, and we received in September 2001 a $725,000 payment. In 2002, again, we were able to vacate the properties or the streets that we had anticipated, and the university was able to complete acquisitions that allowed for a second payment of $725,000 to be made to the city. If you will recall, the total 2.9 million was divided into four payments. We're now approaching the third payment. The August 2003 payment, if everything had gone as we had expected, would have been $725,000. However, due to circumstances that we couldn't foresee, and the university was not able to allocate the dollars necessary to buy certain properties, and we were not then able to vacate streets that we thought we would have vacated under the agreement, because we're not going to vacate them until, by the terms of the agreement itself, until the university owns the properties that surround the right-of-way. You all recall that, I'm sure. So what we have tried to do is to look at where we are. If we were to only proceed on the vacations that we have made to date pursuant to the agreement, our August 2003 payment would be $504,839. However, in working with the university and one property owner, we were able to resolve certain concerns about access by a third-party agreement between the university and Bruce's Bike Works, which related to concerns he's had in the past about the street remaining open. The city has agreed to maintain that street, even if it were to be vacated, which we are proposing, and also to collect revenues from meters and any ticket revenue that we would receive. Proceeding on a program I just described, we would then be able to vacate Main Street. If we were to vacate Main Street, which is the proposal, then our August 2000, September 2003 payment would be $882,504. That would leave, under the terms of the agreement, $567,496 that would be payable to the city when we vacate remaining three pieces of right-of-way. Stoughton Street between, I got to check my map, between Goodwin and Matthews and two alleys between Goodwin and Matthews. Those are the three pieces on the original plat that we have yet to vacate, and we cannot vacate those because there are three large properties that exist that use those right-of-ways for access. Until such a time as the university again has funds to acquire these properties, we're not able to proceed on the agreement. However, we do anticipate that there might be the occasion in the next several years wherein the university would buy those remaining properties, and if that were to occur, we would allow the right-of-ways to be vacated at a price that we agreed upon plus an escalator based on CPI. And that would run then to 2009. At the end of that time, this agreement expires. So what we have, what we've collected, if we proceed in this manner, we will collect roughly rounding 2.4 million of the 2.9 million that we anticipated. We will retain three strips of right-of-way, one street and two alleys, to be vacated at a later time with an escalator. And basically, we're buying a few years to see what happens with the university.
Can I ask? It's kind of complicated, but I'm ready to answer questions.
Is the escalator based on CPI, would that figure be calculated as to when the check arrives at the city or when we send the bill, when the vacation takes place?
In fact, that was one of the modifications today. It starts August 1, 2004, and then adjusts each year thereafter.
Right, I'm sorry. So what I mean is, because my impression, or maybe I shouldn't say my impression, what if the city agrees to the vacations called for on day one, and the check doesn't arrive until, say, day 365, or day 180, or something like that? Is the amount that's calculated with the CPI, is that based on, the CPI is if the money were to be paid on day one or paid when it actually arrives or is sent out in the mail or that sort of thing? And maybe it's not a big deal because if the city sends the bill or passes the vacation the next week, the check is sent out, or maybe it takes...
Yeah, it's probably not a big deal. The way I, right, well, there's a 30-day payment provision. The way I understand it, the price is held as it is right now until August 1, 2004. At that point in time, the CPI is applied. That's good for the next year until August 1, 2005, at which time a second CPI would apply, and so on and so forth, until the expiration of the agreement.
Okay.
And there's a 30-day pay provision that was also incorporated, so it could be more precise, but I think we got it.
Okay, thank you.
And we're, staff administrations recommending to go forward and get as much vacated as we can right now.
Questions? Now, a motion would be in order?
Move approval of the, of the extension agreement, including that which was presented, the amendment that was presented today in the memorandum dated August 4, 2003.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
Motion carries with five ayes. Next, we have a resolution of protest against a proposed text amendment to the Champaign County zoning ordinance.
That's me.
Rob's going to handle this one?
Just some minor cleanups by the zoning administrator of Champaign County to their zoning ordinance. Most significantly, they are proposing a new category called regional special use. They're just proposing the category right now and haven't selected any land uses to go in it. But what this would be is something like an airport or a landfill or something that could have some regional impacts. They want to be able to have the full county board review those cases on a special use permit basis, and right now their normal special use permits are reviewed only at the county zoning board of appeals. So again, they're just adding that category in but not assigning any uses to it. In the next 18 months, we will probably be seeing a full, more comprehensive overhaul of the Champaign County zoning ordinance, and I would expect some of those uses would be tied in at that time. So the plan commission had a meeting and discussed this proposal on July 10th and recommends a no protest vote. So again, this is one of those backwards votes, but staff recommends council defeat a resolution of protest.
Questions? There are no questions. A motion would be in order. Ms. Wyman?
I move resolution number 2003-07-018R.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not, will the clerk please call the roll, and council members, remember the recommendation from plan commission and staff is to vote against this resolution.
Alder Person's Chenoweth?
No.
Hayes?
No.
Otto?
No.
Pat?
No.
Wyman?
No.
That motion is defeated. And finally, we have an ordinance approving a special use permit, a request to establish an accessory church office in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. This is plan case number 1860-SU-3.
Thanks. This is a request by St. Patrick's Catholic Church requesting approval to expand one of their ministry's church office use from their parish center to a residential home that they've acquired in the past year and a half, which is at 310 North Kohler Avenue, directly across the street. Representatives of the church requested that the house be used as office space, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday. Also, to provide food distribution, which is part of the ministry that they'd like to put in this home, and those hours would be 4:30 to 5:00, Monday through Friday, and they currently hold those food distribution activities across the street at the parish center. The use of the property for this purchase is, I'm sorry, for this purpose, is considered an expansion of the church onto that lot. The lot is currently zoned R2 Single Family Residential. And on the 24th of July, the plan commission voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval of the request with the four conditions outlined in the staff memorandum. We did have some public testimony. We had two trustees from the church and an attorney informally representing the church speaking to this case. The plan commissioners did have some concerns about the one-way alley that is directly north of the property of this home. There was a lot of discussion about parking for the patrons that may, specifically the patrons that would come for this food distribution activity between 4:30 and 5:00. There was a lot of discussion about folks that may come between 8 and 5 to drop off food or donations, and where would they park, and there were some concerns also about Kohler being a narrow street and limited parking, and would it be clear that those people accessing that office would be parking across the street? So there were a lot of discussion from the commissioners about that, and also some concern of different scenarios that may happen if this office was moved across the street. Staff is concerned about the piecemeal expansion of the church in the neighborhood. The church currently, right now, doesn't have a master plan, and we'd prefer that an overall master plan be submitted to the plan commission. And for this reason, we've requested that the special use permit be temporary for three years to allow the church adequate time to come up with a master plan to serve their needs and to be fair to the neighborhood. On July 24th, the plan commission adopted the following findings: that the proposed use would be conducive at this location, that the office and food distribution activities wouldn't pose a detriment to the district in which it's proposed, also that the office does meet standards and regulations of the district, and that it would be accessory to the church use across the street. The proposed improvements to the exterior of the home would be just fixing the roof, that it wouldn't alter any exterior part of the home, that it would essentially remain a single-family home in the outer appearance of the home. The city council has the following options in this case: to approve the request for a special use permit without any additional conditions, to approve the request for a special use permit with any conditions deemed appropriate, or to deny the request for a special use permit. Plan commission and staff recommend that the city council approve the special use permit with the following conditions: one, that the use at 310 North Kohler be for the purpose of an office and food distribution to the needy, that it shall be temporary and permitted for three years, expiring August 31st of 2006. Prior to that date, that St. Patrick's Church submit a master plan to the Urbana Plan Commission for review, illustrating both their short and long-term expansion expectations. If the special use permit does expire without a master plan review and approval, that the church shall reapply for a special use permit at that address of 310 North Kohler Avenue. Two, that there shall be no truck traffic associated with the temporary office use at 310 North Kohler. Three, that the house at 310 North Kohler meet any building or code requirements to conduct an office use. They would need to apply for a certificate of occupancy and including inspections. And four, that there should be no signs indicating that the structure at 310 North Kohler is used for any use other than office-related uses and food distribution. And staff will take any questions.
Wyman?
I'm just wondering if they explained how there's going to be no truck traffic associated with the temporary office use or with, basically with the food pantry? How do they expect to get the food into the pantry if they're not going to bring it by truck from, my guess is, Eastern Illinois Food Bank?
They don't work with Eastern Illinois Food Bank. Was my understanding that they get donations from citizens and supermarkets. So they're essentially don't have large trucks dropping off mass quantities of food. And that if there was a truck, it would go into the parking lot across the street, but it was my understanding that they don't have
Okay.
truck drop-offs.
And then also, with regard to the sign, is it accurate understanding that then the the sign basically that they have at the church is what they would then have over at the property on 310 North Kohler? And nothing larger, and nothing separately standing or anything like that?
They are allowed to have a sign, an identification sign of 20 square feet, and they could have it freestanding, I think it's six feet, or they could have it on the building.
And have they indicated which they will do?
No.
Okay. And any approval or, like, special use permit approval, even temporary, doesn't indicate that, or they have no basically doesn't indicate that the city or the plan commission will then automatically approve whatever their master site plan comes up with? I mean, there's we're giving this, if we give this special use permit, it doesn't mean that if they come back with a master site plan that the council or the plan commission doesn't agree with, we're under no obligation by passing this special use permit to approve whatever they come back with, right? That would be correct. Thank you.
Ms. Chenoweth?
Do you know if they are or will be paying property taxes at this location with the special use church use?
I don't believe so, because it's owned by the church and it has been for over a year.
So they haven't been paying property taxes at that? It's a tax-exempt property?
I believe it would be, yes.
Do you know, is their long-term goal for that house to be used for food distribution from here on out, or?
It's my understanding that they really, they haven't set, they haven't really thought it out what their long-term goal was, and at the plan commission, the trustees did speak that Father Rem is currently the priest at this congregation, that he would be retiring in a year. And at that time, they'd like to work with the trustees and the new priest for the next two years and hold committees and really go over, work with the new priest about their long-term goals. So no, I don't believe that they have any long-term expectations that this address. They may decide to rent it out later. In the short term, they're cramped in the parish center.
Has it been made clear that, well, two questions. One, do special use permits usually have time limits, or is this unusual that we've set a time limit?
I'm not really sure.
We've done it before?
Yeah, we have done it before. I'm not sure.
Is it typical that we do it? I know we did it for the Unitarian Church. I think we had some kind of time limit. It would be clear it went back to its prior use, but I...
It's not that typical that we do a temporary situation. We did it for the Unitarian Church because they only requested it to be temporary while they remodeled. But we really thought this would be a good way to kind of test it out and see how well it worked and get them to do something more long-term planning. I can't think of many other special uses that we did on a temporary basis.
I I agree with the idea of having a temporary special use permit. I'm wondering whether or not you all feel that since we haven't explicitly stated that a renewal would be contingent on submitting a master site plan, and yet that seems to be the sentiment from from reading the plan commission's minutes, and it's certainly what this council member would like to see the church develop. Would it, is there some reason why we haven't stated that renewal would be contingent on that and that basically they might as well not come back to us for to renew the special use unless they have a site plan, master site plan in place?
We do stipulate in the following conditions that they have three years to have these proposed activities with a special use permit, and you know, before that date, they can submit a plan and get approval, and after that date, we'll see how it goes, and if they do submit, if they don't submit a master plan and they decide after three years that they'd like to apply for a special use permit, we would consider extending these activities at that address. Does that answer your question?
So I guess three years down the road, council members may forget that we decided to give them a special use permit for this without them necessarily having kind of a master site plan, and and my hope would be that we would provide some incentive that would make it very clear to them that we need to understand their plans for expansion and and that and that they need to have a master site plan that our staff can work with in kind of making future decisions. And so I'm concerned that that in three years, we'll forget that we asked them to do master site plan, and they won't be anywhere closer to where they are now in terms of having such a plan. And given that that's a sensitive neighborhood and it's certainly a historic neighborhood, I feel like we should be creating either more carrots or more sticks to make sure that there's a master site plan in place in a three-year period of time.
Well, I can comment on that. We don't have any specific requirements for master planning. We strongly encourage it because in our conversations with the church and other churches in the same situation, there's always a tendency to expand lot by lot, and in fact, we had two conversations going on with the church at the same time. I don't even think they realized that we were talking to one person about expansion on a different lot while they were asking about the special use permit process on this lot. So our comments then were, look, if you keep coming back with another request for another lot here and another lot there, it's going to get a little difficult. So let's bring an overall plan of what you want to do, and then you wouldn't even have to keep coming back. There would be one plan approved. However, I don't think the zoning ordinance anywhere requires that kind of process. They have the right to keep requesting special use permits. We keep pretty close records of these decisions. At the end of the three years, it would come up in our particular files that this is coming to an expiration. We'll get with them and see what their plans are, how they want to handle it, and hopefully they will, you know, have worked on a master plan, and we would have been included on, you know, assisting them with that in some way. So they pretty much know when it's coming to an end and then call and want to know, you know, what they need to do.
Questions? Ms. Bad?
I have a, just a question for Ms. Chenoweth, this follow-up. I'm looking at the condition number one for the granting of special use permit in the in the actual ordinance that we would, that we'd be voting on, that's on page seven. I'm just wondering what, I guess I thought it said, it says this, which you're concerned about, but I'm wondering if, how you would change the language to express a concern that you have differently from the way it's expressed here?
Well, couldn't we add an additional condition that says that prior to August 31st, 2006, the St. Pat's will submit a master site plan, and that that's a condition of this special use permit? That would actually be stronger than what is here currently.
It says that, so...
No, it just says that they...
It says prior to that date, they shall submit a master plan to the Urbana Plan Commission for review and approval.
If the special use permit expires without any master plan review and approval, the church shall reapply for a special use permit. They're going to have to reapply anyway.
Because it's a temporary special use permit, right. Now, I guess what I'm wondering is, I think it would be, I think it'd be inappropriate to say that another special use permit will not be approved if there isn't a master site plan? Because I'm thinking that's, I mean, that's kind of what you're getting at, that's kind of what you want to say, but I'm wondering if we could say anything, because we can't really commit to the next council denying something, so... Right, yeah, the city attorney's nodding. So I'm just wondering, because that'd be the obvious thing to make clear what you're saying, so other than that, I'm just wondering what else we could say? I agree with your point. I'm open to it. I just don't know how much more we can say than what this says.
Well, my question then is, this statement, prior to that date, August 31st, 2006, the St. Patrick's Catholic Church shall submit a master plan to their Band Plan Commission for review and approval, does that mean that it is a condition of this special use permit that they submit a master plan prior to August 31st of 2006? Is that a condition?
That was our intent.
Okay, I misunderstood then. So that's actually what I wanted, and I misunderstood the language of the ordinance.
Okay.
I just have one other question, different topic. I didn't see a list of people to whom notice was sent about the hearing, the plan commission hearing. Was notice sent to owners of properties within 250? And so we just didn't get that list? Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I can get that to you if you'd like, if you're interested.
Actually, I would like just to have it for my files, that that's something that it's it's good when it's attached. Occasionally, there's a mistake and someone, I know there's one in my neighborhood last year where it was either the person right next, I think it was the person right next door didn't get it, and with, and all the persons likely to notice that.
Right.
And so, in that case, a neighbor noticed it first and told them, but just if we could always get that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Definitely.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order?
I move approval of the ordinance.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Otto?
You're moving approval with the conditions suggested by...
The ordinance in the packet, yes. It includes all the conditions. They're stated in the copy that we received in our packet.
Any other discussion, any further discussion? Not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Person's Chenoweth?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with five eyes.